Calling this meeting to order.
My members of the board and members of the audience this evening, we have students here from Laureles Elementary and Liberty Memorial Middle School to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And here to introduce students from Laureles is our principal, Mrs. Celia Ontiveros. Mrs. Ontiveros.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce our two Laureles Mustang students, Chloe Perales. Starting with her, Chloe Perales is daughter of Melanie Perales. She is eight years old, third grader, A honor roll student. Chloe is very responsible and dedicated. She is always striving to be the best. She is kind, caring, and sweet with everyone. She offers friendship to all those she meets. She also shows leadership in and out of the classroom. She is part of our Laureles Mustang Cheerleading Squad, which she dedicates a lot of time and effort. Her favorite thing to do is read books, and when Chloe grows up, she plans on attending college and becoming a teacher. Her dream is to help students get better and grow smarter. Her hard work and dedication will definitely lead her to amazing accomplishments in life. Chloe Perales. Next, we have Giselle Garza. She is daughter of David and Leonel Garza. She's eight years old, second grade, A and B honor roll student. Giselle is a happy, energetic student who is always eager to help her teacher and classmates. She is a great team player and always has a positive attitude. Her favorite subject is math because she enjoys challenging herself to learn all her math facts, and she also enjoys playing the math games that her teacher prepares. Giselle is a member of our Laureles Folclorico Dance Team and does an outstanding job. And when she grows up, she wants to go to college and become a principal so that she can keep the students safe and out of trouble. So this is Giselle Garza.
Time to introduce students from Liberty Memorial Middle School is our principal, Mrs. Nisi Garza.
Good evening. Mr. President, members of the board, members of the community. Today I'm here to introduce to you Ashley Lopez. Ashley is an eighth grade student at Liberty Memorial Middle School. She is the daughter of Jose and Marise La Peña. Ashley is currently enrolled in all pre-AP classes. She is an A honor roll student and is in the top 10% of her class. Ashley enjoys extracurriculars, extracurricular activities that include cheerleading, volleyball, track, UIL improv, UIL spelling, UIL dictionary skills, and chess. She plans to graduate in the top 10% of her class and attend a top ranking university where she plans to pursue a career as a neurosurgeon. Introduce Ashley Lopez. Next, we have Mr. Solomon Isaac Aranda. Solomon is currently an eighth grade student at Liberty Memorial Middle School. He is the son of Lizette and Rafael Martinez. Solomon is in all pre-AP classes. He excels in all his core and elective activities and core areas. He's been on the A, B, and A honor roll since he was in sixth grade. He participates in basketball and track. Solomon enjoys fishing, hunting, and practicing basketball at the Los Fresnos Community Park. Solomon plans to graduate the top of his class and aspires to attend the University of Houston and major in engineering. Introduce you Solomon.
Ladies and gentlemen, the students are here to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Please be seated. Are the parents or our leaders here tonight, if you would stand and would be recognized? Or our parents? There they are. They're already standing. Thank you for your leadership. Ms. Garcia, do, uh, do roll call for us, please.
Mr. Jesus Amaya. Mr. Leonel Garza.
Present.
Ms. Sandra Garcia, I am here. Mr. Martin Castillo, he is not here tonight. Ms. Darlene Peterson, present. Mr. Ray Farias is not able to be here tonight. Mr. Ruben Trevino.
Present.
Mr. Gonzalez Salazar.
Present.
Ms. Elizabeth Mealy.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Mr. Salazar, district recognitions tonight.
Mr. Amaya, we have plenty. Months of April and May are for us as we begin to competitions. And this evening, introduce to you our principal from Los Fresnos, principal of Los Fresnos High School, Mr. Justin Stumbo.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. We're here tonight to honor some of the best and brightest at Los Fresnos High School. These students exemplify hard work and commitment, produce successful results. I would like to start by introducing our athletic director and head football coach, Patrick Brown, who will introduce our special Olympians.
Good evening. It's my, uh, Mr. President, members of the school board, and Mr. Salazar. It's my incredible honor to introduce some of the best, most dedicated, hardest working athletes we have at, uh, our high school level. And I think if you come by and watch them in the gym, um, they get after it pretty good. And, uh, in the weight room as well. And I think you'll see a lot of them wearing some of our football stuff and showing off their muscles in the hallway. Um, but an incredible, uh, group of young kids, led by Coach Rodriguez. You'd like to come up, Coach, and introduce these students.
I'll lose the short. Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, uh, members of the community. Um, I'd like to thank you all, our administration, our principals, our, um, our athletic director, our parents, for all your support and for the privilege of working with these athletes. Uh, these guys, a lot of times, you know, they teach us a lot more than we can actually teach them. So we really enjoy, you know, the opportunity to be working with them, you know, day by day and, uh, and watching them succeed in, in the sports that they compete in. I'd like to introduce at this time our coaching staff. Uh, Ms. Flora Vazquez, if she could pass by and... She's from a teacher at Los Fresnos United. We have Mr. Andy Garcia. He was not able to make it today, but I'd like to recognize him. We also have Coach Javier Navarrete. Also, he was not able to make it, but he's one of our coaching, coaching staff. Ms. Patricia Amador from Adora Romero Elementary. She's a teacher there. And then we have with us Mr. Jaime Longoria, if he can pass by. He also helps us at Los Fresnos at the high school during the outdoor activity class, which is like our athletic period and during all practices and competitions. Our program offers four sports throughout the year. Uh, we offer bowling and powerlifting during the first semester. Then we offer basketball and track and field second semester. And our athletes, if they play first or second at the area meet, they can, you know, they have, they earn the opportunity to go and compete at state level. Um, these guys, some of these guys win and competed in Austin for bowling, um, for powerlifting. We have some state champions here in the room. I'll, I'll call them out right now. And we also have members of our basketball team that will be competing in Arlington in May, the 24th through the 28th. Um, without further ado, let me introduce Kaylin Albiard. She's a state champion in ram bowling. A student at Los Fresnos United. We have Soraya Riola. She was not able to make it, but, uh, I'd like to recognize her. We have Ashley Brown. She's also a state champion in ram bowling. We have Priscilla Godinez, who will be competing in basketball. We have Armando Gonzalez, state champion in powerlifting, and also state qualifier for basketball. We have Jerry Gonzalez, powerlifting state runner-up and basketball state qualifier. We have Eric Hernandez, a high school student, was not able to make it. She's a bowling state champ and a basketball state qualifier. Oh, there she is. I'd like to recognize Desiree Lee and Desmond Lee. Uh, they were not able to make it, but they did great. They were both powerlifting state champs. They're twins, by the way, so they both won first place. That was pretty awesome. We have Mr. Matthew Leva, also part of our basketball team, competing in Arlington. Ricky Lopez, high school student, also basketball state qualifier. We have Gilberto Lugo, who was not able to make it, but he also did great. He's a power, powerlifting state runner-up. And, uh, we have Frank Tapia, powerlifting state runner-up, second place. And last but not least, we have Mr. Carlos Teran, uh, powerlifting state champ. Thank you so much.
Are the parents of our student athletes in the audience? If you are, please, please stand so we can thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Sarah Thudone to come up and introduce our AMC competition, uh, math students. These are some of our, between Los Fresnos High School and Los Fresnos United, these are our top scorers in the, in the competition that just took place last month. So again, I invite Ms. Sarah Thudone to come up and introduce these awesome math students.
Thank you, Mr. Stumbo. Good evening, President Amaya, board members, and Mr. Salazar. Today I will be presenting the winners of the American Mathematics Competition, also known as the AMC for 10 and 12 grade levels. The American Math Competition is the longest running and most prestigious math contest in the United States. The contest is made possibly by the Mathematics Association of America, which is dedicated to strengthening the mathematical capabilities of our nation's youth. This is the fourth year that students at Los Fresnos High School and Los Fresnos United have participated in the competition, and they have been extremely successful over the past four years. A total of 387 students participated in the competition from Lyford, Albey ISD High School, Brownsville Early College High School, Harmony, and South Texas. I would like to, to ask the LFU and LFHS administrators to please join me at this time so that they may hand the certificates to the winners. For AMC 10, from Los Fresnos United, we had 30 participants in our district that competed. And in third place, we had Antonio Martinez. In second place, we have Figrid Wawenda, who is not present tonight. But in first place, we have Noe Leon. Among all teams that competed, uh, the team from Los Fresnos United took first place with 220.5 points out of all the districts that competed. So congratulations. I will now present AMC 12. These students are in grades 11 and 12 at Los Fresnos High School. Third place, Joshua Salazar. In second place, we have Aaron Salazar. And in first place, we have Dorian Martinez. This team was tied for first place with South Texas ISD, so congratulations again. We do have numerous teachers that have contributed to the math knowledge of these participants, and some of them are present tonight. So teachers, please come forward and congratulate your students.
How about the parents of our, our champion mathematicians? If they're in the audience, please stand up and take a bow.
Any parents, please stand. Thank you, students and parents, and congratulations on your extraordinary performance.
At this time, I'm going to invite CTE Director, Mr. Ronnie, Ronnie Rodriguez, to come up and talk a little bit about our CTS OSA that will be presented tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stumbo. Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar, thank you very much for the opportunity to recognize, uh, some of our state qualifiers and students who had projects at the Aurora Grande Valley Livestock Show that, uh, made the, made the sale. Tremendous amounts of work was turned in by, of course, our, our parents and our sponsors, but most importantly, our students. So tonight, we just give them a few minutes, and I thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with them to introduce them. Uh, to start out, we have Ms. Melissa Garcia, who will introduce both HOSA and BPA for the both LFU and LFHS.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Amaya, board members, and Mr. Salazar. I proudly introduce to you our BPA state qualifiers. And we have Melissa Tyde. She qualified in Interview Skills Global Marketing Team. Alyssa Escobar, she qualified in Banking and Finance and Global Marketing Team. Serena Tieskiewell, Fundamental Spreadsheet Application and Administrative Support Team. Sydney Flores, Personal Finance Management and Small Business Management Team. Luis Mendez, Advanced Work Processing and Administrative Support Team. Yvonne Mercado, Intermediate Work Processing Administrative Support Team. And Michael Reese, PC Servicing and Troubleshooting.
Before they leave, I guess it's too late. Are our parents here? Please. Congratulations to our parents. I apologize.
Next, we have our HOSA, um, for high school and LFU. We have also state qualifiers and national qualifiers in HOSA this year. Ava Farrar, Healthcare Issue Exam. Daniela Marques, Maude's in Ex, uh, in Writing. Yeah. Adicia Flores, in Prepared Speech. Natalia Saldana, Medical Innovation. Juana Garcia, Healthcare Issues and National Qualifier. Isaac Munoz, Prepared Speech. Robert Marine, in HOSA Happening. Norma Perales, in HOSA Happening.
Parents, please stand if you don't mind so we can honor you. Thank you very much. And now to introduce our DECA students from LFU, Ms. Janie Pettis.
Mr. Amaya, members of the board, Mr. Salazar. I'm here today to introduce my DECA members from Los Fresnos United, 2017 State Qualifiers. My Vice President, Brianna Alex, Fashion Merchandising Promotion Plan Team. Maddie Soder, Hotel and Lodging Management. Emma Stumbo, Fashion Merchandising Promotion Plan Team. Enrique Valencia, Fashion Merchandising Promotion Plan Team. Thank you.
Do we have any parents in the audience of these young men and young ladies? And now to introduce the DECA members from the Los Fresnos High School, Mr. Larry Trevino, sponsor.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Salazar. My name is Larry Trevino. I am a DECA chapter sponsor from, um, Los Fresnos High School. Okay? I, along with our DECA members, would like to thank you for inviting us here today. Uh, it is a great honor and appreciation that I would like to introduce to you our DECA members, uh, which at district competition qualified for state competition this past February in San Antonio. Our students competed, uh, competed in areas of Business Administration, Marketing, Finance, Hospitality, and Entrepreneurship. All did extremely well. Very proud of them for competing with other top students from around the state. Please allow me to introduce to you our chapter members, uh, starting with our officers. President Albert Escalero. Alexandra Garcia, Vice President of Community Service. Yamilo De La Rosa, Vice President of Competition. Luis David Garza, Vice President of Public Relations and Historian. Jacob Stambor, Treasurer. Nicholas Rodriguez. And Roy Cantu.
We have parents of these leaders, if they would please stand, so we could recognize them, we'd appreciate it. Last but not least, to introduce our FFA members who made the sale at the Rio Grande Valley Livestock Show in whatever project they had this year, is Ms. Christian Rank.
Okay, I'm not that tall, so. Good evening, Mr. Amaya, Board members of the Board, and Mr. Salasat. Family members, community members that are here with us tonight. This is an evening where we are here to present not only our teachers, but our students for their success through the FFA organization. We will be presenting students that won various honors at the Rio Grande Valley Livestock Show and the San Antonio Livestock Show. Many people do not know the facets of being an FFA member, but no matter if the students are competing at a livestock show or in public speaking contests, all of the students here tonight deserve recognition for their success, willingness to work, and most importantly, their willingness to learn. We'll begin tonight with our one student that made the sale in San Antonio, and that's Ms. Allison Watts, she placed second with her market steer. We move on to the Rio Grande Valley Livestock Show with Mr. Dylan Crouch, Reserve Breed Champion Hog. Josie Flores, First Place Market Rabbit. Caesar Monzon, Second Place Market Hog. Brianna Bennett, Second Place Market Hog. Lorena Lopez, Third Place Market Goat. Isaac Munoz, Third Place Market Steer. Hunter Wernicki, Third Place Market Lamb. Monica Gonzalez, Third Place Market Steer. Michael Ramirez, Third Place Market Hog. Madison Wilson, Division Champion Photography. And Jose Elizondo, Division Champion Horticulture. I take pride in being able to serve our students in agriculture education and to have the support and dedication from my teaching partners. Ms. Edna Sanchez, Mr. Eric Bernal, and Mr. Thomas Garcia.
Our parents? I think we have a few parents left. Thank you very much. Have a great cross-section night from our athletes to all our K personnel, the principals, thank you, all the sponsors, the directors at the support office, whether it's the Special Olympics or the Livestock Show, it takes a lot of hours, a lot of encouragement, and so thank all of you, and especially our students, thank you very much. Congratulations. That was the exciting part. Mr. Salasat, district reports.
Mr. Amaya, members of the Board, we present to you our monthly financial reports. We also present to you the Budget and Tax Calendar. The Budget and Tax Calendar lays out the process that we will follow for adopting the 1718 budget. It is a living, working document, we will keep you updated. If we have to switch dates, change dates, we will revise it and bring you back at every board meeting from here on out until we adopt the budget, we will bring back the Budget and Tax Calendar. Tax collections are a little higher than they, higher this month, this is the month that several entities pay their taxes, so you see a slight increase over this time last year. But other than that, we'll entertain any questions, unless you have any questions, we can move on.
Oh, sir, no questions, thank you very much. Move on to, we did not have anyone sign up in public audience. Number eight, Consent Agenda, we have five items on Consent Agenda, this time we'll take a motion to accept Consent Agenda as listed, and if someone would like to pull something. Mr. Trevino.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to move that we approve Consent Agenda, it's written on today's agenda. Number one through five.
I'm sorry, do we have a second?
I'll second it, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, we have a motion, a second, to accept Consent Agenda as posted and as written, items one through five. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Action item one, discuss and take action to approve substantial completion of Aquatic Center project, is there a motion? Mr. Garza.
I move to approve subst- substantially complete the Aquatic Center project.
Second, Ms. Garcia. Discussion. Go ahead, sir.
I encourage the board members, if you haven't gone out there to look at the project, it's, it came out outstanding. I know we built that for a practice facility, but it's, I don't know, let's say it's pretty nice. And I think we could have dual events there, or something in that capacity. It's, they put in the pads, so that it could go with the time, the times, and it's something that we can be proud of. I think it took us a long time to finally come to a consensus to build this, this Rainfall Aquatic Center, but it's well worth it, and it looks like it's going to be really utilized and something that we can all be proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Any other comments, discussion? I have a motion, a second, to approve and substantially complete the Aquatic Center project. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Item number two, discuss and take action to ratify an academic agreement for the award of dual credit between Texas South Most College and the Federalist Consolidated Independent School District, is there a motion? Mr. Trevino.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I move that we ratify an academic agreement for the award of dual credit between Texas South Most College and Los Presos Consolidated Independent School District.
Do we have a second, Mr. Garza? Discussion. There being no discussion, we have a motion, a second, to ratify the academic agreement for the award of dual credit between Texas South Most College and the Federalist CIST. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Item number three, discuss and take action as necessary to approve the instructional school calendar for the 2017-2018 school year, is there a motion? Mr. Garza.
I move to approve the instructional school calendar for the 2017-2018 school year.
Is there a second? Ms. Garcia. Discussion. We're getting, the, being the District of Innovation, it's, we're really moving up that study date, aren't we?
Yes, sir, we're able to start school earlier and finish the semester with our, which is beneficial to, finishes first semester in December, which is beneficial to our students, and we're able to finish again in the month of May, allowing extra time for interventions for students that are having to take state assessment a third time. So we're really excited about being able, or having those opportunities to exercise that local control.
Our kids will be in class two weeks or more before most of the others in class, so. It may not be exciting to them, but I'm sure it is to their instructor, or it'll be more exciting in May for them.
They're excited on the back end of it, yes, sir.
Any more discussion or statements? Yes, ma'am, both.
No, ma'am, it's, it's in line with what we did this year, it would be the... Uh, as long as the legislature is in session, I wouldn't write them off, but we have a contingency plan, but the District of Innovation plan that was approved by current law and approved by the Texas Education Agency is good for five years, so, for now, we're okay.
Any more questions? We have a motion, a second, to approve the instructional school calendar for the 2017-2018 school year, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. It is unanimous. Item number four, discuss and take action to approve a resolution opposing funding of private and home school legislation that reduces public education funding, do we have a motion? Mr. Garza.
I move that we approve a resolution opposing funding of private and school, home schools and legislation that reduces public education funding.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, sir.
Ms. Peterson. Discussion. We have a motion, a second, to take, to approve a resolution opposing the funding of private and home schools, legislation that reduces public education funding, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Item number five, discuss and take action to approve resolution opposing forced consolidation of public school districts in Cameron County, is there, do we have a motion? Mr. Trevino, a second. Everyone, I don't guess we can do that, Cameron. We'll have Ms. Garcia. Discussion. Go ahead, ma'am.
I want to go ahead and say that I think how important this is to go ahead and approve this resolution, and it's good to see our community come together to go ahead and support it.
Anyone else? I don't think I've seen Cameron County, well, with the exception of one district, Cameron County, and really, we shouldn't say Cameron County, it's all districts in the state that border Mexico and the Gulf of Mexico, because Cameron County was not issued in the actual bill, I don't think it wasn't named, but to see all of them come together on this and speak with one voice, I think that gave us a lot of, the legislator, the senator, saw that we were united on it, and we can't fall asleep, we can't fall asleep on either one of these two, I know that we still have a vote on this, but we can't, and I'm not just talking about this board, anybody that's listening, we cannot fall asleep, because I think at times, we're taken for granted down here, even though it is probably Southern Oasis is where they do the best coaching, the best teaching, it's just proven, the data proves it, but we cannot fall asleep, because we, things like this will come at us without us seeing, without us being named, and if someone's not paying attention, they can get away from us. So, that being said, all those in favor of approving the resolution opposing forced consolidation of public school districts in Cameron County, please signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Well, these resolutions are on the agenda, on the webpage, if anyone would like to read them, is that correct?
Yes, and we can, we can submit them to the appropriate offices for our legislators, we can put them on our website, we can, I'm going to put them on our website, but we can submit it to Texas Association of School Administrators and send them on to our representatives so that they know where we stand.
Well, I would think at a minimum, we're sending it up to our, to our representation. I know that there's other districts that have done it, I think that it would be good for us to be up there as well. As far as putting it on the website, that's, that's up to y'all, but certainly, if someone needs to get a hold of it to look at it and see what it says, it should be available to someone. Thank you. Item number six, discuss and take action to approve out-of-state student travels, we have three items here. We have the two chess, our two chess teams going to Nashville, Tennessee, in May, May 11th through the 15th, high school and JROTC to Paris Island, South Carolina, June 4th through the 10th of this year, both of those are this year, all three of them are this year, and our HOSA Nationals in Orlando, Florida, June 20th through the 25th, again of this year, is, do I have a motion? Ms. Peterson.
I would like to move that we approve the out-of-state student travel to, for the chess team and our, and ROTC, and also for the HOSA Nationals.
Is there a second? Mr. Trevino. Discussion. Being no discussion, we have a motion, a second, to approve out-of-state travel, student travel for our chess teams to Nashville, and JROTC to Paris Island, South Carolina, and the HOSA Nationals in Orlando, Florida, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action as necessary to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the following positions for the 2016-2017 school year, or in this, in this case, it's teachers, is there a motion? Mr. Garza.
I so move.
Second. Ms. Peterson. Discussion. Being no discussion, we have a motion, a second, to approve item number seven, which is to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for position of teacher for 2016-2017 school year, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Once again, unanimous. Is our teacher here? No? All right, item number eight, maybe we have one here for this one. Discuss and take appropriate action as necessary to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for the positions of teacher for the 2017-2018 school year, is there a motion? Ms. Garcia. Second. Mr. Trevino. Discussion. No discussion, a motion, and a second to approve the superintendent's teacher recommendations, personnel recommendations for the positions of teacher for 2017-2018 school year, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous. Are our teachers here? You have them? Congratulations, thank you. Welcome aboard, you've already been working, working hard. Congratulations. It is 6:52, we're going to go into closed session at this time. It is 6:52, we're gonna go into closed session at this time. It's 7:26, we're back from closed session, do not have an action item on, we'll discuss and then everything we need to, so at this point, I think that we are, two announcements, sir.
Mr. Amaya, Members of the Board, we just want to remind you that we suspend normal operations in honor of Good Friday and our Easter holiday. On Monday, we resumed classes on April 18th, 2017, and Friday, April 28th, a reminder that that is the night of our employee banquet, we're meeting at, at Los, we're holding this event at Los Presnos United, our next regular school board meeting is Monday, May 8th, and just an announcement, that Tuesday, April 11th, we have Falcon baseball here at home and Lady Falcon softball also here at home, so if you want to take in the games, they'll start at 7:00 PM on April 11th. Those are all the announcements we have.
Go ahead, sir.
Employee banquet, it's an event we used to have in May, we moved it up to, there's so much in May that we moved it up to last week, at LFU, yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir, meeting agen- uh, adjourned? Or adjourned, or adjourned, could be adjourned, I don't know. Yeah, we could, we're without an agenda any longer, so we're adjourned.